Series opener. Let's bring back Howard Bryant of Meadowlark Media. And Howard, listen, no NBA team has ever lost the first two games at home and then won the championship. You know the Warriors must have been thinking about that.
Well, I don't know about that. I mean, obviously, in the back of their minds, they knew that they needed to win the game. But I think that every game is its own series. Every game is its own momentum. I don't think anybody, except maybe the most, the most ardent partisans were going to think this was going to think this was going to be a four-game series in any direction. You've seen these two teams. They're very evenly matched. They've been, the Celtics have been patterning themselves after the great Warriors teams for years. And now they're here. And Boston has home court advantage suddenly. And on we go to Boston on Wednesday.
Yeah, I mentioned that great comeback in game one where the Celtics showed they could take a punch and then, you know, keep going. In game two, I don't know, but did you think they looked a little overmatched at times?
I thought that they, I think that the series looked exactly the way it did in game one, that the Warriors are the Golden State Warriors. They have this amazing ability to put up lots of points really quickly. The question is whether or not you can weather the storm and how well your offense is performing. If your offense isn't playing when they're on those runs, you're going to be down 30 in a hurry. But the biggest thing that I saw last night was the key to the series to me, which was that Robert Williams, the Celtics center, is hurt. He was coming down on one leg. He was not moving. He was not moving nearly as well as he was moving in game one. He had knee surgery late in this, in the regular season. And his health has been a key to everything the Celtics do. Last night, he looked completely compromised. And the minute he was compromised, it wasn't just the Warriors shooting threes that was doing them, that did the Celtics in. It was the points in the paint. The Warriors were getting whatever they wanted, layup after layup after layup, because, because he wasn't there. And if he's not right, or if he's not going to play in this series, then the advantage really shifts to Golden State.
Before the series began, there was a huge disparity, I suppose there still is, in experience, because the Warriors players had a combined 123 games of experience in the NBA Finals. And Boston, do you know, Howard, it's kind of an easy answer, zero.
None of them had made the Finals before.
Will that matter, do you think?
No, I don't think it's going to matter for two reasons. Number one, number one, the Celtics have been knocking on the door for a long time. Okay, they hadn't made the Finals, but they've been in four of the last 60 Eastern Conference Finals. So it's not as though they don't know how to play pressure games. And also, as we saw in game one, this can happen, experience only counts sort of after the fact. You're looking at these games and you're saying, okay, which games? To me, when you break down a series, it's always when you're dealing with inexperience. It's how many games should you have won against how many games you actually won? And that calculation was actually on the Warrior side now. So this, the Warriors are flying to Boston, and they're still thinking, we probably should have had game one. So, so the experience actually didn't help them in game one. It was, it's what you do on the court. You've got big professionals there who won a championship. Deal the cards.
Yeah. What will be the keys to game three?
Adjustments. Number one, what is Robert Williams' health? Number two, are the Celtics going to pass the ball, or are they not going to pass the ball? When they pass the ball and play defense, they're the best team in the NBA. When they don't, and they hang around and just sort of play one-on-one and, and get really stagnant and turn the ball over, then they're in big trouble. And also, what kind of energy are they going to bring to game three? They worked really, really hard to get a split against Miami, then came home and they were down 30 in the second quarter. They did the same thing against, against Milwaukee. They get a split, they come home for game five, and they blow the lead. So it's really going to be what kind of energy they bring, because you know Golden State is a championship-level team. They're not going to quit. They're not going to come up with no energy. So it really depends on how the Celtics respond to this moment. So I guess that is the experience factor.
Yeah, and Golden State has Steph Curry, which always matters.
And Golden State has Steph Curry.
Yeah. Sounds like, if I'm hearing you right, that, you know, even though there were some lopsided victories for both teams in this series so far, it's still really anyone's to win at this point. There should be no despair quite yet.
No, this is, this is Bill Lee in 1975 in the Red Sox-Red series, where they look at him after the, after game two, after the Red Sox had lost. And everybody looks at Bill Lee, and the reporters say to him, so, how do you sum up the series so far? And he says, tied.
It's pretty straightforward.
It's 1-1.
Yeah, best of seven. So there's lots of basketball to go. Howard Bryant of Meadowlark Media, thanks very much. Can I ask you to make a prediction here? Do you, do you shy away from those sorts of things?
I do not do that. I'm predicting this series is going to go, it's going to go longer instead of shorter. It's not going to be a short series.
All right, all right, very good. Here and Now.
Thank you.
Is a production of NPR and WBUR. I am Peter O'Dowd in Phoenix.
And I'm Scott Tong in Washington, DC.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and Staples, with supplies to get business done no matter where it gets done. From ink and toner cartridges to technology like webcams and networking accessories. More at Staples stores or staplesconnect.com. Staples.
So I talked to lawyers who consult with accusers who are considering coming forward
The 2:00 PM session for Roanoke City Council for June 6, 2022 is hereby called the Order. And I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCoy, to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
President.
Mr. Best pitch.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Price.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. And the quorum is president. Is Reverend Kemp here? All right, welcome. Come on up, Reverend. I'm pleased to recognize Reverend Terry Kemp, Children's Pastor and Ministries Director for Fort Chiswell Church of God. All right, good to have you, for Fort Chiswell.
And for our city, for you.
All right. We've been, will be led by Reverend for our invocation. I'll lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance following.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this day and your abundant goodness bestowed upon each of us. We thank you for this opportunity to serve this city and this community with your talents and abilities you have blessed each of us with for your glory. We ask that you bless each member of this council and all of our city leaders and their responsibilities to represent the citizens of this city in a professional and unbiased manner with godly-inspired wisdom and vision, so that your will for our wonderful city shall be done. Let us acknowledge value in each viewpoint shared today. Let us be united in our pursuit of achievement and not divided or hindered by our differences. We pray for your divine inspiration for decisions made in this chamber today and in the days to come. Dear God, we earnestly pray for you to keep your protective hand over the citizens of our city, especially our children and our youth. May Almighty God lead us into an even greater accomplishments as the city of Roanoke continues to be a leading example of progress and community collaboration. May each of us approach our daily responsibilities with integrity, a desire for excellence, and a continued effort for unity that will benefit the citizens of this city for years to come. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Reverend. I want to welcome everyone to our afternoon session of Roanoke City Council, which is officially our first session of the day. We had, they had briefings this morning that was televised live. All council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RBTV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeba. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. The announcements. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expiration of terms of office. Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals is one vacancy, and we're looking for an architect. The City of Roanoke Finance Board, one vacancy, and that's a citizen at large. Gun Violence Prevention Commission, one vacancy. The Roanoke Public Library Board, two vacancies. The Virginia Western Community College Local Advisory Board, one vacancy. And for any and all of these vacancies, you can access the city's homepage to complete an online application for the above-mentioned vacancies. And let me say, this council encourages any of our citizens who want to step forward to be a part of this body, this city, in helping us govern the city. It's so important. So we, we encourage that. And it's an easy process. All you need to do is, you can contact our clerk's office or go online, and they will walk you through the application process. But we always encourage our citizens to step forward. All right. Item number two on our agenda this afternoon is presentations and acknowledgements. And I will ask Councilman Joe Cobb to please join me at the floor podium. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm proud, the mayor of the city, to declare the month of Ju, June, Pride Month. And I'm pleased and honored to be joined by my colleague, Councilman Joe Cobb, to read a proclamation and to recognize any of the members who wants to do that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council. I would like to introduce and actually ask a few people to join me up here. Garland Gravely is with the House of Expression. Todd Rothrock is with the Drop-In Center. Peter Volleson is president of the board for the Roanoke Diversity Center. And I'd also like to invite Angie and Luke up, because we have been working collaboratively on growing our municipal equality index, which is a measure established by the Human Rights Campaign. And when I came on council, there's a possible score of 100. And it's to measure equity and equality for the LGBTQ community in the city. And when I came on council, our score was 12. And this year, this past year, it was 65. And with, especially with Angie's work and us working together, we plan to have that score over 90. Of course, our goal is 100, because that's what we do in Roanoke. We want to be the best. So it's my honor to share this proclamation. And I want to say a special word of thanks to Dr. Samantha Rosenthal, who's the founder of the Southwest Virginia LGBTQ History Project and Walks, for helping in the creation of this proclamation. Whereas Roanoke is a welcoming and compassionate city that embraces the diversity of our residents, including our LGBTQ+ community, in which lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and ally citizens have been part of Roanoke's history since its beginning, and a visible community formed here in the 1960s, anchored by the region's first-known gay bar called The Trade Winds, which opened on Franklin Road in 1953. Whereas the first gay liberation organization in the city, the Gay Alliance of the Roanoke Valley, was founded in 1971 and was followed in 1977 by the Free Alliance for Individual Rights, with both organizations advocating against the harassment of gay men by bar owners and law enforcement. Whereas transgender Roanokers became increasingly visible in the 1970s, and a group of trans women attempted in the late 1970s to organize the region's first chapter of TRI-S, a pioneering national trans organization. And in late 1978, The Park, which today is the only nightclub that remains from that era, opened to rave reviews. In 1980, lesbians in Roanoke formed their own organization called First Friday and the annual Roanoke Valley Women's Retreats. Whereas the AIDS crisis hit Roanoke hard with the first local death from AIDS reported in 1983, gay activist groups such as the Blue Ridge Lambda Alliance and the Roanoke Valley Chapter of the Virginia Gay Alliance organized the earliest AIDS advocacy and care work, as did Metropolitan Community Church of the Blue Ridge. Out of these efforts emerged the Blue Ridge AIDS Support Services, or BRAS, and the Roanoke AIDS Project. Today, the Drop-In Center carries on this important work in our community. Whereas in 1990, a coalition of gay and lesbian groups formed the Alliance of Lesbian and Gay Organizations. And in September of that year, they put on the city's first Pride Festival in Wasina Park. In September 2000, an anti-gay shooting at the Backstreet Cafe on Salem Avenue took the life of one person, Danny Overstreet, and wounded six others. This hate crime shook the city and opened a new chapter in our LGBTQ+ history. Whereas the 21st century has witnessed the emergence of new organizations and initiatives, including the founding of Ladies and Gents of the Blue Ridge Transgender Alliance in 2007, the growth of Roanoke Pride and the Pride in the Park Festival, the formation of Youth Saga and Prism Foundation, supporting LGBTQ youth, the region's first LGBTQ+ community center, the Roanoke Diversity Center, in 2013, the founding of Diversity Camp in 2014, the creation of our first uniquely Black LGBTQ organization, the House of Expression, in 2019, and Southwest Virginia Pride this year in 2022. Whereas Roanoke is a place where the LGBTQ+ community can live, love, work, and play, now therefore I, Joseph L. Cobb, member of Roanoke City Council, along with Mayor Sherman Lee, Sr., mayor of the city of Roanoke, do hereby proclaim June 2022 throughout this great seven-time All-America City as Pride Month. Thank you all. Any of you want to say anything? I'm going to actually present this to the Diversity Center, and if we can put it up there.
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great, okay? All right. Well, thank you all for being here today. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cobb.
All right, we're now down to item number three, which is the Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers that have signed up to be heard?
We had one speaker. I don't know if she's here, Teresa Scruggs. Okay. She wasn't sure if she'd come today.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll go down to the next item, which is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the consent agenda is approved. All right, we now move to the regular agenda. And there's a public hearings. And as I understand it, someone wants to comment on that?
Just real quickly, Mr. Mayor, this matter is going to be continued and will be heard in July. There are some additional Ts to be crossed, and Is to be dotted. And I would hate, hate it if Mr. Best pitch had to come forward and point some things out to us.
I would hate that, too.
Okay, he generally catches that. So we're going to postpone this?
Yeah, it will be at your July 5 meeting, and then again on July 21, which is when action will be requested.
So we will have that same period, that same time?
Correct. And actually, we'll be reopening the 30-day comment period again, which closed today. We'll be reopening again.
Reopening, yeah, okay, yeah, that was what I was wondering about. Thank you.
This item, 5A, will be moved to July.
Yes.
All right. Our petitions and communications, we have none. Reports of city officers and comments of city manager. And I'm going to call on our city manager to introduce the briefings.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, as has been our pattern here in the last several months, at the first meeting of the month, we offer up a briefing around the gun violence prevention frameworks implementation. Just as a reminder, before I ask the chief to come up, our focus has been and continues to be in three areas. Those three areas being prevention, intervention, and enforcement with that. I'll have the chief come up. The chief always covers several parts of those. And then depending on how the flow proceeds, we'll do as we've done before, which is the chief will be followed with a discussion of work going on with our Star City Safe Initiative and other outreach efforts that Angie will lead. And then we'll conclude with work of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. And Councilmember Cobb will provide that update as well.
Thank you.
And happy to, of course, ask questions along the way as well. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Chief, good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I just want to take a few brief moments just to update you in usual fashion, as I have in the past couple of months, starting with firearms seized. So this month, or the month of May, we've seized 18 firearms, and that puts us to a grand total of over 100 firearms since January 1 of this year. During the month of May, we also served 934 warrants, 213 of those being felony warrants. And again, I'll provide these comments to you as well, so you don't have to do so much writing today. 416 of those were misdemeanor warrants. In the way of prosecutions and court proceedings, I'll just kind of systematically go through those. Levon Belcher, he was indicted and subsequently arrested in the month of May for first-degree murder and use of a firearm in commission of a felony. And this is for the Brooks-Mullen homicide that occurred back in January of this year in the 3,500 block of Yellow Mountain Road. Secondly, J. Twann Shepherd was indicted and subsequently arrested for first-degree murder and use of firearm in commission of a felony regarding the Arnes Kurtley homicide that occurred in February of this year in the 1,200 block of Jefferson. Thirdly, Brandon Damian pled no contest. Obviously, he was previously arrested, and that case was disposed of in court, in which he pled no contest to voluntary manslaughter regarding the murder of Philip Davis, which occurred in June of 2020. For that crime, he received a sentence of 10 years after three, being suspended. And lastly, Mr. Ahmad Mubdi, in which I've kept you updated on that case as well. As you may remember, that case recently went to trial. He was subsequently found guilty. And that sentencing occurred recently, and he was sentenced to life in prison for the murder of Mr. Derek Bostick back in September of 2020. Those were the cases that we had during the month of May. And with that, I will move down to the Reset update. For the month of May, Reset, both Mr. Merchant and the volunteers deployed four times. Obviously, our deployments are in response to either homicide occurring, gunshot wounds occurring, or a property damage involving gunshots to areas in which this happened. So the Reset team went to four different occasions for that. As a reminder, Reset volunteers always pass out brochures to include information on support services. And we obviously encourage them to utilize the support services that's listed on the brochure. The Reset coordinator also continues to be involved in the apprenticeship/mentorship program. Many of you know that the third cohort was recently started, and I'm sure Angie will talk a little bit more about that. Mr. Merchant has also started a Wednesday night basketball in the Northwest area, obviously with the focus on mentorship. And again, this is another opportunity for me to dust off my Jordans and get out there with the young ones and play a little basketball with them. Lastly, I'll just comment that, obviously, Mr. Merchant and most of the Reset team members certainly continue to work collaboratively with Mr. Roberts and Mr. Stolball in any endeavors that they also are doing. With that being said, I will be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have in terms of gun violence.
Chief, I didn't hear all of you mention about Mr. Merchant and the basketball. What, where, when does that start?
Mr. Merchant, obviously, with the kids at the library, Melrose Library, I think some of the kids may have challenged him to a basketball game. So what he has done was worked with our school system to have access to the Forest Park Gym on Wednesday nights, just, you know, for about an hour, hour and a half, up to two hours, where he takes some of the young men who's at the library who want to play basketball and just go up there and shoot hoops with them. Obviously, there's a heavy focus on mentorship and, you know, making sure that there's a ear for those young men, and women, really, so while they're playing basketball, they can certainly.
Mayor, that run, that, that game is going on at the same time our extended library hours are going on?
Yes.
So we've had extended library hours for some months now. And so this is actually a subset of that effort as well. So those two things are going on at the same time.
Is this part of the whole government?
It is part of the Star City.
That Jeff Powell started? Okay. Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, just another opportunity for our kids to engage in constructive activities instead of otherwise.
Yes.
Yeah. Chief, thank you for being here. The commission itself doesn't work, focus much on the legislative issues around gun violence.
Yes.
But I know in, in some recent conversations, we've been talking about, you know, the city has a legislative agenda. And as you are out doing this work, are there recommendations you would have to counsel in terms of what we might advocate for from a legislative agenda standpoint to support your efforts and particularly around the ability to make arrests?
Sure, sure. Well, I could probably go on for, for days on that topic. However, I will spare you of that. But I'll be more than happy to talk with each of you at any time. of that, but I'll be more than happy to talk with each of you at any time, as we discuss that further. As the chief of police, I'm always in the position where my department enforces the laws that have been enacted, we work within those bounds. Certainly, you know, there are some things that could probably help us in doing that, and in some cases, topics such as this could be quite controversial. As you know, there was a special session, you know, shortly after the George Floyd incident. While I certainly understand what the purpose behind some of those laws are, and I'll go so far as to say, some of them were appropriate, but I will also say that some of those very laws also prohibit us, law enforcement, with being effective, such as presumptions, you know, when it comes to bail, the ability for the judge to cast sentences. In many cases, on item A that I spoke of, before the officer is theoretically done with the paperwork, because of the new presumptions that are associated with some of the laws that were created in special session, that offenders are out of jail on a very insignificant bond, and in many ways, that can create a narrative of no accountability. And certainly, it is very frustrating for the officers. I know I speak for law enforcement after doing the meticulous and superlative work associated with creating a good case, when that individual is released from custody and in many cases, reoffend. That is very frustrating for law enforcement, not to mention the victims that are associated with, with those crimes. So, again, I can go on and on about many things I would suggest, and I certainly would welcome any opportunity to further that discussion with you.
Thanks, sir.
Yes.
Chief, let me say, I, and Councilman Best Pitch and I have always have a chance to, in the legislative form, meet with our local legislators, and we talked about, and as you probably were, of more police officers, the House bill that's been sitting there for a while and nothing seems to, to move on it, and I think that's an urgent need, not only here in Roanoke, but probably across the Commonwealth and the country in terms of police officers. But, you know, I, I know we're gonna be, hopefully, we'll talk about that with our legislators when we, when we prepare our legislative budget, that's something we just gotta keep before them. I'm encouraged by what our Attorney General is trying to do by meeting, and we did have, as you were, you were part of the summit or a roundtable discussion about gun violence and those things, and I committed, and I'll talk further with Mr. Cobb on that. But for our citizens, because there are a lot of people are watching now, gun violence is just picked up, as I mentioned it a while back, I can see gun violence in schools, just, you know, it's almost revived. What can our citizens expect in terms of, if you can answer this, or at least have some thought on gun violence, resource officers in schools? Do we have enough to cover our schools here in the city, or can you share with us some, some of the plan that we have?
Yes, so, obviously, with our 17 schools here in the city, you know, it would be my goal to have an SRO in every school. Of course, I'm the chief, of course, I'm gonna say that. And I certainly don't wanna speak for our school superintendent, but I have certainly heard her support for the same, to ensure that we have SROs in, in the schools, certainly acting in a capacity in which the SROs are designed to do. And I think I'll take 10 seconds here to say, the role of the SRO definitely is not a punitive role. You didn't go to class, I'm gonna call the police officer on you. It's about mentorship, and it's about making sure you provide a positive role model for those, those students. Secondarily, it's to definitely keep the school as safe as possible. That SRO will be responsible in part for ensuring that there's protocols and processes in place for a difficult situation, many situations, much what we've seen here in the recent weeks, just having the school in collaboration with school administration prepared for those. I do think our schools are prepared for that, and I think having SROs could only enhance that and ensure that, that preparedness is, is sustainable.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna come to all my count, I'm gonna come back with that, just wanna follow up on that and just say that, when incidents like happen over the past week, some citizens will probably call school board members officially, but I can guarantee you, they're gonna call the mayor, they're gonna call the council on what you're gonna do.
Right.
And they wanna know, and that's why, and I appreciate you sharing that, because it's something that, that many of our citizens wanna know, and, you know, there've been certain polls out about, do you feel safe in schools and up, and I don't wanna get too far in the school issue, but in terms of, you know, we get a chance to speak to you about those kind of things, and it's probably one of the most, if we did a survey in the city right now, that'd probably be one of the most things that most citizens that have children in school are concerned about, you know, with children, and their concern of safety, and you don't want kids in school thinking about, am I safe in the classroom, and those kind of things, and I know it's not all on you, but that's something that, that we have to, have to, to live with and try to work with. So, thank you for that, and I'm gonna go to Ms. Moon Reynolds, and then I'll come back with Vice Mayor.
I was just gonna follow up on the SROs, but I wanted to call on the city attorney. I know there was some legislation recently that I discussed with the city attorney about the SROs being in the schools, and I just wanted him to share a little bit more on those conversations with them.
Just real briefly, it, it does not mandate it, but of course, there is support, I believe, from Richmond, that SROs present, and you heard the chief echo his support, as well as he didn't want to speak for our superintendent, but I believe I have as well heard her support, the presence of the SROs in the school.
Yes, I think the legislation was calling for, as you say, not mandated, but perhaps having SROs in all the schools within the, in, in the Commonwealth, and that was my conversation with him was, if that was possible for elementary schools to have SROs at each elementary school versus the, I wanna say, five or so?
Yes.
That spreads around to each one.
Sure.
Based on what is happening now in the schools, is that a probability now, looking at going forward, of trying to see about putting, that there are officers in those elementary schools?
Absolutely.
That the kids would feel safe.
Absolutely. That, that is a, a task that both the sheriff and myself share. You mentioned elementary schools, obviously, you know, he covers, his, he and his team cover.
Right.
The elementary schools, and, and that's always, in the case of threats to school, we work together to try to give each one of those threats, as erroneous as some of them may be, due diligence in making sure that we either dispel or come back with a credible finding for each one of those threats, so I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you so much for, for the update, and I know you spare us every time and say you don't have to write all this stuff down, and I'm glad that we're getting a copy of it, because people are asking us all the time, the media, the residents, what are you doing? And you've named quite a few things that we're doing. I would just ask that we do a better job at communicating this information to the city manager, because I don't think everybody got that, I got the talking points, but I don't think everybody got it, and it's really helpful information.
Sure.
Because we can't remember all that, so that's the only thing I'm, I'm asking, is that, that we figure out a way, either you give it to the city manager or email it to us, but I did get a copy, thank you.
And it did go to everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it should be, usually what'll happen is the chief will provide those to me, and then I'll include them in the update, we didn't get that the last time, but then it went out.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, 'cause I know a couple of my colleagues did not have it, but it's very good information, because we need to be able to articulate what it is.
Sure.
Or convey to our citizens, this is what we're doing, and I appreciate that information, thank you.
Absolutely.
Uh, Councilwoman Price?
Thank you, Chief Roman, it's always good to see you, and as has been stated, it's good to hear that there are measures being followed to help mitigate the threat of gun violence in our city. I wanted to follow up real quickly, and you don't have to go into any detail.
Okay.
But in light of what, you know, we're, we're saying as far as safety in our schools, is the police department and Roanoke City Schools still engaged in doing intruder drills to, those practice drills that are so, you know, unfortunate, but I'm just curious as to how those are, are being handled today.
Yes, I can stand here and tell you that our police department, school division, along with our sheriff's department, are constantly engaged in ensuring that we are doing the most cutting-edge, latest information as it relates to active shooter scenarios. Obviously, that is a very, very serious topic.
Right.
And we certainly do everything that we possibly can to ensure that proper processes and protocols are not only in place, but practiced and very familiar with students, staff, administration, and law enforcement.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I think it's important for the, our, our citizens to be aware that, you know, these are things that are taken very seriously, there was a time, you know, when us old heads had to, you know, um, what was it called, Bill, what were they called when we duck and cover?
Duck and cover.
Well, we did. Well, I, I just, in all seriousness.
Yes.
I, I just think it's important that those protocols are, and it's, it's just frightening to think that those are the kinds of things that we have to make certain that, you know, those who are, who are in charge of taking care of our babies when they're at school, but also that our children have some idea as to what are some measures that they should, should have in mind in order to, to mitigate these kinds of horrific events, so, thank you.
I know for sure that our superintendent and her team, her staff, definitely take that very seriously, and in our most recent press conference on Friday, I heard the superintendent say that some of the threats that we see as it relates to gun violence, as they come into the school system, whether it be through students, on social media, thinking that perhaps that's fun to do something like that, or whether it's a, a very serious external threat.
Right.
I've heard our superintendent say, those threats are the new bomb threats, we used to see this very often.
Yes.
With the bomb threats in years of past, and that's what we're dealing with now, and certainly, it is in our, it is our endeavor to ensure that we do everything possible to make sure that, number one, we are prepared and have the means, training to deal with any of those threats that may confront us.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, you're back.
I just have one final question. It's with regards to the reset team.
Yes.
How many volunteers work with Mr. Merchant?
I can't say the exact number, and the reason why I can't is because Mr. Merchant, so diligently, he will get a volunteer just walking down the street.
That's what I was gonna ask, if he had enough, and if there was any in the community, perhaps that was interested.
Right.
And participating, who would they reach out to?
Mr. Merchant.
Okay.
Mr. Merchant.
Through the police department.
Through the police department, yeah.
And do you all still do your community walks through the housing complexes?
We try our very best to do those, obviously, reset are doing those, but we do those, when we do them separately, because the focus is very different. When Mr. Merchant's team go in, the last thing we would want to do is say, we're here because of a crime, what did you see? Certainly, that is therapeutic, those walks that Mr. Merchant completes. Certainly, as Mr. Best Pitch had suggested last time we spoke, that he'd like to see some of those occur again, and we are certainly endeavoring to do that. There's a lot of things that we would love to do, but, you know, with some of the manpower shortages that we have, sometimes we have to pick what the most pressing thing is and do those. But certainly, it is within my vision to see those come back at a level in which we used to do them. So that is definitely something I would like to see.
Would like to see it as well, thank you.
Ms. Moon.
Chief.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, gee.
No.
I wanna ask, I asked it last time, and I still wanna do it, and I noticed, because you got issues in gun violence all on the TV from Philadelphia to, to down in Texas and other areas, that reward money, is that still being utilized, does that help you in terms of apprehending some of these criminals out here?
Sure, it certainly doesn't hurt us, that's for sure. It is just a tool that is there, you have some people who like that idea and some who don't. And what I would say for that is, for the ones who that is beneficial for, if that is a motivator to get you to talk more about a crime, specific emphasis on gun crime that has been committed, it is absolutely a help. And, you know, like you said, with the plethora of mass shootings that we've seen, 13 just this weekend, last weekend 14, from Chattanooga all the way to Philadelphia, as you mentioned, to Texas, anything helps, and we, we certainly appreciate having that available to us in case that is appealing to someone, they can certainly capitalize on that opportunity.
Well, we had a conference call, and I'll talk, we're gonna talk about that a little later, with, I called Mayor Lightfoot in Chicago, because she and I are on the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and one of the main issues across the country is gun violence, and, you know, we talked about that and interrupters, and I called back and myself, Councilman Cobb, Angie O'Brien, and Sean Hunter, talked to Deputy Mayor O'Malley and his staff, and there were, they introduced us a lot of things, but they were very, they're very impressive on how reward money could be used, I'm not gonna go into that right now publicly, but there were some ideas of how that has helped them curtail crime in certain neighborhoods. Chicago is a city of neighborhoods, and, you know, what a lot of people don't realize is they've been able to bring that number down in certain neighborhoods, other neighborhoods is still a little tough, but I was pleased to say, and I know we're talking about, you know, we're 100,000 people, and we're talking about a city of over 2 million. But they seem to, to be, to convey to us that some of the things we were doing, it was a good idea, it was right on the right, we were on the right path, and one thing that I was most impressed with, with money, how it was used, and how they asked people to contribute to that, so we'll talk about that, but I was really impressed with that in terms of how that money is being used to do a lot of things, even with war, but other things that they could do, because somehow, money moves people. Money, all of a sudden, you see things with money that you didn't see before, and, you know, so we're trying to, we wanna make sure we give those people opportunities to do that here, and, so, anyway, I just wanted to mention that, and we talk about that, but
Sure.
We, we talked long and hard, it, it was hard for me to convince council provider to go with that reward money, but I wanna put everything on the table, everything we got, to, to try to curb and, and stop this gun violence in our city, and we know it's a common, it's not a Roanoke problem, I've said that many times, that it's a societal problem, it's not Roanoke, but I wanna probably put everything on the table that we can to, to do, and, and they left us with some ideas, and an invitation, a big invitation, to, to do that, so, and you were included in that, and you'd like to talk with them, but that's something else we'll talk down the road, but I was very impressed with the things and the questions we asked, and how they sort of looked at what we were doing, and we were on the right track in terms of a lot of things that you do, and they almost gave, for me, it was a pep talk, because they thought that what we were doing were pleased, they thought the questions were right on time, so, in this issue of gun violence, because everybody, right now in the country, is dealing with it, and it's probably one of the biggest issues right now, as we go into the midterm, one of the biggest issues out there is gun violence, what do we do with guns, and gun sales, and, and all of those kind of things. So if there are no questions from anybody else, thank you, Chief.
Well, thank you all for your time, and I think, lastly, I will just take the opportunity to really thank our men and women in blue, in law enforcement. As I look across from the 50,000-foot elevation and see some of the things that they are tasked with resolving, dealing with, responding to, my, my hat's truly off to the men and women of the police department, where they truly do work very hard to ensure that this city is safe, so, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Chief, and Mayor, we'll, we'll have Angie O'Brien come up.
And Mayor, we'll, we'll have Angie O'Brien come up and then update on the Star City Safe Initiative, and then we'll conclude with a discussion from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission.
Good afternoon, especially to those of you I haven't spoke to already. So what I'm going to do is just kind of do a little bit of a highlight of the last couple months that somewhat talks about spring break. I'm going to break it down into the categories of Parks and Rec, libraries, and human resources. I'm going to talk a little bit about some challenges that we've, we've overcome, and then highlights and upcoming activities for the summer. So with Parks and Recreation, the E-Games continue at Fishburne. We've served roughly 75 youth through those E, through the E-Games with Parks and Rec. The Music Lab, that is still underway. We've only served about eight folks through that program. However, we've got some, some additional outreach that's underway to help pull in different demographics to start utilizing the Music Lab that's available. And then, of course, to highlight the Washington Park Court dedication on May 26, and the three-on-three basketball tournament that occurred after, after that, where we had food and ice cream and a DJ and some prizes that were available. Through the libraries, the extended hours still continue and will continue at least through the summer. Chris Roberts led a recent mentorship program that created six additional mentors at the libraries, and also working with Lloyd Merchant. The Dinner and the Movie on Wednesday nights at 5:00 p.m., additional funding been set aside to increase the meals there. In recent weeks, we are serving upwards to 150 people on those Wednesday night events. And the library staff are currently underway in the development of summer programming for youth. As Chief mentioned, the third cohort is underway through the month of May. HR worked on Thursday evenings to help the youth complete applications for the program all through the month of May. On May 24th, nine youth started with the program. Some of the, some of the things that the youth are going to be looking forward to as they go through the program are financial and couns, financial counseling. So we've got Brandon McGinnley lined up to go over checking and savings accounts and some other financial matters with the youth. HR is preparing a teen apprenticeship program guide, and once that program guide is available, I'll let you all know where you can review that. There is a tentative date for graduation for the two cohorts. So we have the second cohort and the more recent cohort after they complete. Tentatively, that date is scheduled for June 29th, and just once that is firmed up, I'll let you all know when that will take place. And the youth will start working in city departments in July. And I want to highlight one of the challenges, and then kind of talk a little bit more about that. Through Lloyd's work with the mentorship program, so one of the things that, that he has noticed has been the failing grades of some of those who have been participating. And so, you know, I want to highlight Lloyd on this, is he, he started working with one of the, one of the youth and obtained tutoring for this particular individual, who, who was failing with, with all F's on most of their grades. Lloyd was able to secure tutoring for this, this youth, and she went from F's to A's on assignments, and not just A's, we're talking hundreds. So that just is an example of how we, we see, you know, challenges, and we find ways to meet the needs of those who we're working with. The highlight of the spring break activities, all went really well. Some of those events were a luncheon at the Hotel Roanoke. Youth went to the Mill Mountain Zoo and to the Star for the overlook. You all know about the Star City Safe Cleanup in Northwest, which was extremely successful that stretched from Herschberger to Gainesboro and 581 to Shenandoah. As Chief mentioned, Lloyd has started working with the, the youth on Wednesday nights. Some of the youth have, have been going over to Forest Park. He's been taking them over there to play basketball. My understanding, a couple other activities over there, wolfball and tag football as well. Next weekend, I believe Thunder Valley over in Salem is, is up next for the youth. Recently, some of the, the young men in the program with Jeffrey have gone to get haircuts and through their AAU basketball games, have had some, some folks there supporting them on and cheering them on as well. One of the last things I wanted to highlight was, was something that, that Councilwoman Moon Reynolds brought up last time, was working with some of the, the females in the program. So through the, the mentors, there has been a, a female mentor that has kind of taken, taken charge and has been working with some of the youth females, teaching them about dancing, proper hygiene, hair care, and taking care of their nails through manicures and things like that. So I wanted to make sure I let you know as well that, that the, the young ladies are also on the radar, and we're working with them as well. Any questions? Yes?
Now, I would be remiss if we didn't take this opportunity to talk about the youth summit coming up, that'll be here in a few weeks. And, and I want to bring it up now, because in all, you know, the activities that you, you know, just described, and what the chief brought up, I cannot stress enough how important it is that we not forget to, to celebrate our youth for the good things that they're doing. And in some of the past surveys that our Youth Services Board has, has done, our young people say over and over again, they want more opportunities of fun and activities, and to not always be punished or be punitive for the, the mistakes of others. So I just want to bring that up, that that's coming up. It's June 25th, the upper level of Washington Park, and we have worked really hard to try to mitigate as many obstacles as possible. Free food, free transportation will be provided. We're also going to give our young people an opportunity to showcase their talents. It's got to be family-friendly. We have three-on-three basketball, and we also have a petting zoo that's coming. So I, I can't stress how important it is that we take the time, every time we can, to let our kids know how much we appreciate them and how much their city loves them. So if anyone needs more information, they can go to the Youth Services Facebook page, and all the information is there. And I want to thank Angie for all of her hard work as well. Thank you. That's my PSA for today.
I think it's also important to note that there's no registration this year.
Exactly.
So just show up.
Just show up.
We're going to find a way to feed you.
And it's, and it's open to all youth, middle school through high school, and we think we're going to have enough food to feed everybody. And icy chocolate.
Price, what time is it?
It's from 10 to 6.
Yeah, 6.
Or 5, yeah.
10 to 5.
10, 10 to 5, yes. 10 to 5.
All right, Ms. Moon Reynolds.
I just had a question. When you talked about the, I guess, the extended hours of the library and everything that's going on for the youth, will there be any ongoing funds for, to sustain it, based on what Ms. Price just said, too? The kids look for things to keep, continue to do. So will there be other plans to continue the whole government?
Well, we, we definitely have two years' worth of funding that's been set aside, so we, we know we're, we're at least looking into the, the end of '24 through the ARPA dollars that have been set aside for this effort. And the library is already underway with programming for this summer, so I, I foresee that.
That's good. Two years is good. Thank you.
Good question.
Let me say something, and I, and I've talked to Joe a lot about this. I think we missed the ball on letting that boxing program get away. There was a boxing program over in Southeast where those young men come and box. And if there's anything that teaches you discipline, it's boxing. And we had that, I, I, I gave them some funds out of my basketball program to get their awards. But that's a program that this gentleman and his, he's a member that they were currying themselves, but that's something that I've been working on for years. I thought we would have gotten, I think renting that building was about $10 a month or something, but they've sort of drifted away, and they had a lot of kids in there, both black and white. And some of the kids come from hotspot areas. I mean, the areas where it's hotspot, where the action goes on. But that was something they looked forward to, to coming, to getting together, boxing. They were taught, you know, mentoring goes on, counseling goes on, those other kinds of things. And those are the kids that we want to reach, you know? Those are the hard knockers out here. They come from areas where they see a lot of things. And I, I don't know what we can do, but I like to look at something, and they're not a 501(c)(3) organization, it's just, hey, I'm putting the money forward, and I want these guys to come in. And it, and I was impressed with the discipline that he had of those guys, and they probably don't get that. And people who attended the matches, they see some folks in there that, you know, they, they need to be there, and they see the sons, and, and, and I'm sure adults, they box, too, but they see the sons out there boxing. And that's a mechanism we've got to get to who, if we're going to deal with these kids, especially the kids, and I'll say again, I won't call everybody, they're hotspot kids, hotspots around here. Man, those kids need that. They need that, they need that discipline. So, and I'm, I'm at fault. I, I think I should have worked on that a little more, because I think that was, that was something, as we talk about basketball and other sports, which I'm a big proponent of that with my program, but that boxing was something I realized, and so we need to get that place and get those kids going. And I'm going to do what I can to try to revive it. But as we talk about monies that come in and grant monies, this is something that we need to keep our own, because I think it potentially can do a lot of good things in our community.
Mayor, can I just follow up on that?
Yes, Sean, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just to follow up on what the mayor said, is there another avenue that these organizations can take if they are not a 501(c)(3), or do we have a, a mentoring program that can help them get set up, because maybe they're having challenges, you know, getting set up as a 501(c)(3)? Because the mayor has a very valid point. There are some really good organizations out there that are really contributing and that can really help us get some of our youth off the street. Are you?
I've just, I've got an answer for you.
Okay, well, I'll let you answer then. You, you go ahead and answer.
Do you want to answer, or you?
Well, you can, then I can add to it.
Well, so I think for, for me, the, the best way would, for them to work with any of the, the for-profit organizations would be to profit with nonprofit organizations for, for grant applications. I mean, then I'll let you.
So you're saying for them to just kind of team up with somebody who's already established as a 501(c)(3), if that's possible?
Yes.
Yeah, we're, we're not, unless we go through a procurement process, we're not able to provide funding to for-profit businesses, except through our Economic Development Authority, which is what we're doing with the ARPA funds for small businesses. Obviously, all of the funds that we've talked about that are involved in the Star City Safe Initiative, as well as, actually, later on your agenda, you'll hear about Human Services Advisory Board and some of the recommendations. Those will all be nonprofits, because of the way in which the Virginia Constitution actually limits what we can, what we can do. So easy, the easiest way is for them to partner with a nonprofit, so that a nonprofit can assist in that effort. As far as, kind of, Mayor, your question regarding kind of helping sort of setting up the 501(c)(3), I mean, I would probably turn to the community and say there, there are certainly financial advisors, attorneys, and others in the community I would hope that would step up and assist them in getting those. It's not overly complicated to go through that process, but it is a process with the state and the IRS that they need to actually go through, so.
Right. I, I think that's a good thing, and I have, I mean, I wouldn't mind partnering my lead youth outdoor basketball program with them, because we got, we only go for a month or six weeks, and we could help them. I'd have to let some of my donors know, because most of the money we have donated, and, you know, I don't want to get caught out there with soliciting money for one thing and going to another thing. Better get these reporters something to write on for about a week or two. So I don't want to do that. I want to make sure all the Is are dotted and Ts are crossed on that. And, but I, I'm willing to help that. I just think that's a good opportunity. And so if I can find ways, and I'm willing to, to do that with my, my board, to say, hey, let's, these are young people, because what we're dealing with in our program, youth basketball program, is young people. Let's get these kids, let's get them something to keep them busy and to keep them learning, and learning discipline, because I think that's the key, discipline.
Mr. Cobb?
Ms. Cobb?
Yeah, I was just going to follow up on some things that have occurred recently. So Latore Woodbury, who's the director of, and founder of Boxing and Brawling, met with Allison Jorgensen, who is the Council of Community Service Nonprofit Resource Center, and they talked through some of the different options, including partnering with 501(c)(3). I've also connected him with the Small Business Development Center at the Regional Chamber, and TAP also has a Small Business Development Loan Program. But the reason for that is because Tori, like many small businesses, has been so focused on the programming piece of it and getting, you know, delivering to the kids, that he hasn't been able to focus on the management part of it and making the business sustainable. So that's a big, that's an important piece, because you can offer the program, but if you can't sustain it, then it's, in the long term, not as meaningful to all the kids who can benefit from it. Subsequent to that, Brad Stevens, who's with Reach Roanoke, and a number of other, you know, nonprofit business folks who have different experience levels, are working with Tori to do exactly what we've been talking about, to, to get him that 501(c)(3) status, which is not a, it's not a long process, but it's just, it's still a process. And if you don't know how to do it, you need somebody who knows how to do it to get through. The other thing I wanted to share with you about their program is that when Roanoke City Public Schools recently had their Career Works Day, I think there were close to 400 youth that participated in that, and Boxing and Brawling was there as part of that. And Tori was so excited, because so many kids were coming and signing up for it. So there is, you're exactly right, Mayor, there is a lot of interest in that. I know they have concern about the space that they're in, and we've had conversations with Parks and Rec about getting them into a different space, and so that's, that's in progress, too.
And I think, and I think that option, once they go through the process with the nonprofit, maybe even prior to that, there is some, there are some options relative to space in terms of rental space and stuff with that.
Oh, yeah, we've talked about some options for space, so that's a good thing.
All right, thank you, Joe. Thank you, Angie.
You're welcome.
And Mayor, then we will conclude this, this briefing with an update from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. Mr. Cobb's going to provide that information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'm going to highlight some things that we're continuing to work on. I wanted to start out with, you know, the recent incidents we've had with gun violence and suspected gun activity in our schools. As a parent, my spouse and I talked with our children last night after the robo-call went out from the superintendent, for a couple of reasons. One, I wanted to know how aware they were of what was happening in, in other schools. They're both students at James Madison Middle School, and they, they see their fair share of issues. So we had, we talked about that, we talked about safety, we talked about ideas that they had about how we could, could strengthen not only safety in our schools and in our community, but then we got into a long conversation about gun laws. So it was, it was a very thorough conversation, and I really encourage families to do this as much as we can, because that's going to make a big difference. Our current initiatives, and Council, you each have a couple documents in front of you. One is a sheet that has our current initiatives, and attached to that are the grant recipients for the Violence Interruption, two-year funded programs, and the mini-grants. And I'm going to highlight a couple of things on those. We just purchased 8,000 gun safety locks in partnership with Roanoke City Public Schools to have available at every Roanoke City Public School for students and their families. Parents are able to go in from now through the end of the school year to their school and, and receive a gun lock, along with instructions on how to apply it. Last week, we also, the schools also sent out the Family Safety Pledge, which went home to every student, and is asked to be signed by the parent and guardian after they discuss it. In addition to that, a flyer... In addition to that, a flyer which describes the distribution of the gun locks, as well as for citizens in general. There are gun locks available through Corellian Clinic, several locations listed here, our public libraries still have availability of gun locks. And the commission is also looking at maybe the possibility of purchasing additional gun locks that we could make available to citizens outside of Roanoke City Public Schools who may want to have access to those. We are, we just completed our first reading program at Lincoln Terrace. We had about 50 volunteers teamed with about 65 students, second and third graders. I was able to participate as one of those readers, and it was remarkable to see the growth in the students from where we started with them and their reading capabilities to where they finished the school year. Now, if, if, if they don't continue that through summer programs, you know, there's, there's the danger of, of losing some of that growth in their reading skills. So I'm grateful for the many summer programs we have, including RCPS Plus, which continues to help them develop those reading skills. And we will, we will continue this program at Lincoln Terrace in the fall, and my hope is that we'll be able to add another school as part of that program. I wanna ask Chris Roberts, who's our Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Coordinator, if he will come now and share about what their team is doing. This is one of our most significant prevention and intervention efforts. Just as a reminder to everyone, we secured a $500,000 state grant last year, which allowed us to hire Chris and two outreach workers, and I, Antonio Stovall is the other outreach worker, and Chris is gonna tell us about an, an additional outreach worker that's coming on. Chris?
Sure, thank you. Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, city council members. My program, again, Chris Roberts, Youth and Violence Prevention Coordinator. We have one current outreach worker, his name is Antonio Stovall. We just recently hired another one, Ms. Brown. She won't start on deck until June 16th, I believe, or the 14th, but she'll be on deck with us as well, so we'll be fully staffed. We have one coordinator, which is myself, and two outreach workers for our entire unit. We have a three-pronged approach in the way we go about setting ourselves up for the business that we do in the city, and that's a preventive, preventive strategic strategies, intervention strategies, as well as suppressive strategies. So right now, what we have going on with our preventive strategies, we have the Rights of Passage Program, which is an after-school program, program that started five weeks ago for young men, ages 14 to 17 years old, most of them are in high school, high school age. We currently have 10 to 12 individuals that have been consistently, consistent in that program. There will be a graduation in the first week of July, which will mark 10 weeks. In that program, these young men are learning self-mastery skill sets, techniques through breathing, yoga, meditating practices as well, taking hikes. They went to our Shepherd Mountain Obstacle Course Survival School, went there. They learned how to eat healthy. Mr. Stovall's taken them on trips to the grocery store to pick out healthy options and know how to prepare healthy meals as well. So they've done that in the first five weeks, and as they move forward, they're gonna dig a little deeper in identifying and recognizing self, self-issues that they have within themselves, to be able to recognize stressors, to be able to recognize anger issues and where they come from and where the roots of that is. And that's a part of the self-mastery program that they're working these young men through. And hopefully, we'll have 10, all 10 graduate, but all 10 may not graduate, just depends on their progression, and Mr. Stovall will continue to monitor that as well in that particular program. Also preventive strategy we have, we also have individual casework that Mr. Stovall's working on as well. We have three individual cases, two of which are from the juvenile court, and one of which is from the community, and then referred to us. And in those individual cases, we're case managing these individuals, which is one, one female as well as two males. So we're case managing individuals through Virginia Cares, linking them up with job and employment opportunities there, also tutoring skills as well with the same people that are helping tutor with their apprenticeship program, we're helping our individuals there as well. And again, working those individuals with self-mastery techniques as well, learning how to figure out what your triggers are when you're getting authority, getting a directive from authority, and learn how to respect authority and understand exactly where your anger comes from so you can be open to listen to authority and be able to get those lessons. Mr. Stovall's doing an excellent job there as well. Our intervention process as well is myself coordinated with Roanoke City PD and identifying high-risk individuals from the ages of 18 to 30 years old. And what we wanna do, once we're fully staffed, is start working with individuals in that particular age range as well, case manage, giving them opportunities to vocational services, educational services, jobs, mentoring, counseling, offering the same opportunities we're offering our youth, but making sure we're offering to those middle-aged adults as well that they're not too lost for those services. From a suppressive standpoint, we're also working with the RPD, our locals, as far as our federal, our federal attorney's office as well, and making sure that we collaborate with them on strategies and opportunities that may continue to promote Project Safe Neighborhood. So we're making ourselves widespread as we, as we possibly can to make sure we cover all the bases from adults all the way down to juveniles as well. We also have a pilot program that we call the Empathy Project. That project, they're highlights and recognize victims of gun violence, talk to their families, interviewing them, and being able to memorialize those individuals that have been lost through art, through art as well as performing art. So we'll have a mule as well as a performing artist memorialize their life in spoken word or in poem. That's what we have going on right now, and that's eight months on the job.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. So just to follow up on a few other things, citizens often ask how they can help, and I would say our biggest ask right now is a program that we are partnering with Better Agreements, which is a conflict resolution, de-escalation, and mediation program called 100 Community Peace Builders. And we are wanting to launch our first cohort of 20 people. It's a 20-hour training for citizens who want to learn more about conflict resolution, de-escalation skills, mediation practices, that, and ideally, we want to have people from all over the city that are not only invested in their neighborhoods, but invested in the city to help identify and prevent conflict before it leads to a violent outcome. So there is, I'll, we'll push out more information about this through our social media and through subsequent newspaper articles, but there is an online application that, that folks can fill out, and I will also see that we get some paper applications here at the clerk's office, folks want to fill those out. For those who are here today, I've got extra copies of the Violence Interruption Grant Awards and the organizations, and a summary of what each organization will be doing with those. There are 23 organizations, and I encourage you to take a look at these. The Violence Interruption Programs are over a two-year period, the mini-grants are a one-year. I know that a couple of organizations I'll highlight, Peacemakers, Sean is here today with us, and they're gonna begin focusing, you've probably already started, Sean, but in, in specific hotspot areas, to do street-based intervention patrol, to connect with neighbors, to make sure neighbors have access to resources they need. If, if they see something suspicious or concerning, to be able to report that, any bits of information that they get, to be able to share those with, not only with RPD, but with the commission so that we can be more strategic in our work together. I've also handed out to each of you Groceries Not Guns, which is the second buyback event that will take place on June 25th at the Melrose Community Center, right across from Melrose Park. It'll be from 11 to 3:00. Citizens can donate to this. The more funding that's available, the more gift cards can be purchased to exchange for, for the guns. This donation form, or not, flyer, has more information on all the aspects of that. One of the things I will say about this is that the goal is to remove between 300 and 400 guns over the next two years from the streets. This doesn't remove all the guns we need from the streets that are causing harm, but it, it makes a significant impact. Last year, there were close to 100 guns that were turned in, and one of the young men who turned in a weapon, when asked anonymously later, you know, why did you turn in your gun today, he said, because my head wasn't in a good place. And if one person's head isn't in a good place, I, we know that there are multiple people. So events like this can provide that opportunity, and we'll continue looking at efforts in that regard. I wanted to share with you a couple of other things. One of the things the commission is working on is to shift some of our focus to working in some of our key hotspot areas, areas, and really bringing together key people in neighborhoods in these hotspot areas who can help us work strategically to get a more concentrated effort, whether it's neighborhood walks, like the Peacemakers do, to, is there enough lighting in these places? Are there too many blighted houses? Are there abandoned cars? Are there things that we can do very quickly and rapidly to change the dynamic in some of these neighborhoods? So, you know, Lansdowne has been a high-impact area, 8th Street has been a high-impact area, sections of Williamson Road have been a high-impact area, as well as sections of southeast. So we're, we're really looking to shift some of our priority focus to some, some of those specific areas. Two other things, and then I'll be glad to answer any questions. The state budget was just adopted, and in the state budget, there is $13 million set aside over the next two years, $8 million for firearm violence intervention and prevention dollars. These are designed to go toward hospital-based and community-based violence prevention efforts. And my understanding is that this will be an application-based process. Because we already have a good relationship with Department of Criminal Justice in receiving grants, we will be applying for these grants. And then $5 million, so 2.5 a year, will go to Operation Ceasefire, which is designed to increase support for law enforcement and for police departments to make sure they have the resources they need to do their work. So that was just approved in the state budget, which is really good news. And then the last thing I wanna say is, I want to, I commend everybody who's doing this frontline work. It's, it's extremely challenging and stressful and traumatic. And I, today, I want to offer a special word of gratitude to the staff at the Williamson Road Library. The head librarian there did an extraordinary thing last week, and I won't go into a lot of detail, but our library staffs see and deal with a lot of things at every library. And I think it's really important when you have the opportunity to just take a moment to thank each of them individually for what they do, because they, our libraries are community centers, and they want them to be welcome places for people of all ages and safe places. And while everyone's beginning to wonder what is safe, they're still working, as are our schools, as are our homes, to try and make sure that we're safe places. So I just wanted to be able to share that word of gratitude. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comment? Let me just quickly commend Councilman Cobb for his work with that and, and having to put up with a lot of things. He's got a lot of money, so you're gonna get a lot of questions coming at you in terms of that, and I'm being one, saying, where is this and how does this fit and where is that because, and, and I'm hoping that council will, will look at this and absorb it because we're getting many questions from people as to what's going on and these are numbers and, and those kinds of things, and churches and what are they doing and all of that. So we want to commend you for your work with that and your staff and you and Angie and the thing that we're doing to trying to make an impact, and I, I think we're headed, again, I think we're headed in the right direction, so appreciate your work and your willingness to take questions at 10 or 11 o'clock at night, or is this, Joe, I can't figure that out, figure this out for me. So, thank you, and hope we, hope we keep heading that way. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, Ms. Cobb, is that?
That, that is it for the, the update on the Gun Violence Prevention Framework. Thank you.
All right, now we're gonna get into that part where we, items that we recommend for action. And sometimes people generally leave out on this, but this is important stuff, ma'am, but you're welcome to go. You're welcome to go. All right, item 7A1 is the acceptance of the National League of Cities Inclusive Entrepreneurship Grant to help cities adopt policies, programs, and practices to give underrepresented entrepreneurs more opportunities for economic advancement. There's a resolution?
Move the resolution.
All right, Matt Crook, could we please read the title of the program?
A resolution accepting the 2022 National League of Cities Inclusive Entrepreneurship Grant funding to the city and authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city.
All right, and discussion by members of council. Mr. Best, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we talk about almost $500,000 going to these programs that Councilman Cobb just talked about, $13 million in the state budget. This is a very small amount of money, relatively speaking, $15,000, and it has the potential to make a tremendous impact in the city of Roanoke. I just wondered if the city manager would take a minute or so just to explain the opportunity that this grant will provide for businesses that really support our local economy here in Roanoke.
And, and actually, I'm gonna ask Ayesha Johnson to come up. She knew I was gonna do that, so.
Oh, even better.
Because Ayesha is actually the staff person that has both applied for these funds and has, will be implementing the program, and as she's coming up here, this is actually a collection of funds that we've received from the National League of Cities to focus in around the area of economic inclusion, so I'll let Ayesha explain what she's working on.
Good afternoon, thank you. Previous grants from the National League of Cities have focused on workforce development and developing our workforce for the types of jobs that we have in this area so people can get higher-paying jobs. This grant is to help develop five to six entrepreneurs who are currently in the informal space, meaning maybe they babysit for family or they do some catering events for family. Well, now they can get a business license, start paying their taxes, and start to do things like compete for government contracts and get that state SWAM, Small Women and Minority-Owned Business Certification, so they can greatly increase their revenue by operating in the formal space where they have a business license, so they have a lot more opportunities open to them. The money would pay for business license, it would give them some mini-grants for supplies or things they may need to get started, and would also pay for some services for them that they may need, like accounting advice, how to keep their books, any legal advice, any advice with HR if they decide to expand and have a smaller staff. So this is really a pilot program to see how it works to bring five to six entrepreneurs from where they may just be operating part-time as an entrepreneur, and bring them into the formal space where maybe eventually they can do that full-time and that can be their career and their business.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I could, thank you, Ayesha. I really appreciate it. You know, we talk a lot about how education is so important in helping people move out of poverty, and a good business climate with good-paying jobs is also very important. If people can't find work, if the businesses are not there to provide the employment for people, it's very hard for them to get out of poverty. So I just wanna thank you, Ayesha, publicly, for all that you've done, because I know this is just one small piece of a much larger picture, but it, it really has the potential to make a huge impact here in the city, and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else got any questions?
I do, I have a question.
Let's move on.
Thank you, sir. This one is for the city manager, and it's with regards to the Gainesboro Hub Initiative, where we've spent the $10 million, following up on what Mr. Best pitch is saying. where we've spent the $10 million, following up on what Mr. Best pitch is saying, where the money was identified for that initiative. Could you give us any more information with where we're at with that, for the minority-owned small businesses?
Sure.
And entrepreneur support and training center?
Yeah, and I will actually add another item as well to that, which is also funded through ARPA, which is the $3 million that's going toward workforce development in this same area, not physical area, but the same economic area. So, there are multiple efforts underway. So, one of those is this economic inclusion sort of sector that Ayesha has been working on with economic development that we just talked about. There is another concentrated effort in the Gainesboro neighborhood, also a part of what Ayesha is working on, in addition to the ARPA funding that's dedicated, as mentioned, to the Gainesboro Hub. The purpose of that hub is actually to facilitate a couple of different things. One of those is generally supporting improvements in health and wellness in the areas. That may include the formation of a health clinic or other kinds of activities in the area. And the other, as you mentioned, is to support entrepreneurship development, as well as small business support that is minority and women-owned in that, not necessarily in that area, but certainly with an emphasis in that area. Of course, that involves discussions about remodeling of properties in the area, acquisition of properties, and so on. It also involves actually program activities, so the first dollars have gone into some of the programming activities currently, and that's where the focus is right now, as we work through some of those other items. Of course, that's a longer-term project, because we have till '26, I think, to spend all of those dollars. So, that's, that hub is indicated. There's $5 million of general fund dollars, and there's $5 million of ARPA funds that will ultimately go toward that. The workforce development is a $3 million initiative, which is designed to build off of what Ayesha's been working on, which is to take the jobs we have in our community that are in the high-growth sector. So, think of things like health and wellness, biotechnology, those kinds of things, where there are a lot of job openings that pay very well, and try to connect prospective employees with that, get them the training certifications, and those kinds of things that are necessary to actually enter into those fields. That contract has already been approved and signed with the Workforce Development Board, and so that work is beginning to kind of take shape now. And over the next couple of years, they'll actually be leading that effort, and we expect to move several hundreds of folks through that. That has the dual benefit of helping the businesses that are already in our community, and the institutions that are looking for those employees, and then ideally, getting folks from where they are currently into higher-paid, more aggressively-growing jobs in those areas. So, those are kind of the three sort of areas, all working around the same field, and the same area of interest as we go along.
So, will the, I guess, the COLAB, I want to call it a COLAB, or the Cohort, the part over there at the Lawson Building for the minority entrepreneurship, that piece right there, that is going to be for small minority businesses, or those interested in going into business?
Yeah, the idea is, and that's where, right now, the one, the programming that's being offered is being offered out of the Lawson Building currently. The other part of that profit, the other part of that effort is to actually focus in on the redevelopment of that building, if we're able to do so, to facilitate more of that as it goes in. It's currently owned by a separate entity, and will continue to be, but hopefully, we're able to take those steps and being able to do that. And yes, that's the idea, is to create kind of a center where those kinds of activities can be supported. And I think your description of COLAB is not really off-mark. We've kind of, we've used the example of kind of a hybrid between COLAB and Ramp, where you've got a place where businesses can incubate, begin, entrepreneurs can begin, and then an accelerator, which takes successful businesses and accelerates them to another level. So, all of those are intended to be a part of that hub effort as well.
And the one that we have, the $15,000 grant with, for the National League of Cities Grant, the, I read on them, the Advancement Foundation, will we still have opportunities to work with them as well for some of the entrepreneur, small entrepreneurs?
Yeah, the Advancement Foundation is definitely one of our strong partners, and, you know, they work with us in a lot of different areas, and Ayesha can talk about more of that work as well, because she works closely with Annette and with the Advancement Foundation.
Yeah, because I was out there on their website.
Yes. They have a business competition called The Gauntlet.
Yes.
Where businesses, whether they're already operating, or they want to become businesses, go through six weeks of training on how to be a small business owner, and then at the end, they compete for cash awards, as well as some in-kind awards, like free legal assistance, accounting assistance, things like that. So, they're going to help us identify the informal entrepreneurs, because I really don't see entrepreneurs coming to us saying, "I operate informally, and I don't have a business license."
Right.
Because of their concern that it would become punitive, and they would be penalized. So, they're going to help us with identifying those entrepreneurs.
But if there are those that want to reach out to say, "I'm operating without a business license," you all would be able to assist them and direct them to this organization for some assistance.
Oh, definitely. Definitely, yes.
I think that'd be good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, ready to call a roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you, Ayesha. Hang around now, we may need you again. We have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the National League of Cities, NLC, for the 2022 NLC Inclusive Entrepreneurship Grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021, 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Any discussion among members of council? Harry Dunn, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item 7A2 is approval of Human Services Advisory Board allocation of funding to various nonprofit agencies for fiscal year 2022 through 2023, and execution of a contract with the Council of Community Services to conduct performance audits. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution approving the recommendations of the Human Services Advisory Board for allocation of city funds to various qualified agencies to assist such agencies in the performance of their programs for the fiscal year 2022 through 2023, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute a contract with the Council of Community Services to perform the necessary performance audits to evaluate the effectiveness and efficiency of all the funded programs by such agencies.
Any discussion by members of council?
Mayor, if I can just quickly give kind of an overview.
Yes, sir.
Of what this is. Thank you. As has been the past practice with council, with the approval of your FY23 budget, we also received funding, or there was funding designated to go to these qualified agencies in the amount of about $430,000. As noted in the cover report for this, there were over $660,000 worth of requests received from 30 agencies funding 39, or 37, there's a typo in there, but 39 or 37 programs. Those programs were reviewed by the Human Services Advisory Board, and again, ultimately made recommendations for funding up to the $430,000. In addition to this being a collaboration with the members of the Human Service Advisory Board, as already has been mentioned, the Council of Community Services and United Way are our partners in this as well. Council of Community Services helps us monitor, United Way helps provide the platform for the applications. The information you have, and the information that's available online, lists all of the agencies that will receive the funding, what they requested, and the amount that they will be receiving the funding. And if there are any questions about any of those items, I know Steve is here and can answer those if I'm not able to do so. Thank you.
All right. Any questions or discussion by members of council? Harry Dunn, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. All right. The other budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to transfer funding to specific Human Services Committee agencies, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2022, 2023 general fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Any discussion by members of council? Senator Harry Dunn, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item 7A3 is the approval of the fiscal year 2022, 2023 operating budget of the Hotel Roanoke Conference Commission. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution concurring in the recommendation of the Hotel Roanoke Conference Center Commission to approve the annual operating budget for the fiscal year 2022 through 2023, for the proposed revenues and projected administrative expenditures of the Commission as a public body, and an operating budget and business plan for the conference center covering projected operating and capital expenses at the facility.
All right. Any discussion by members of council?
Mayor, if I may, I'll just give a, since this is, we've not done this before, so just to give a little bit of indication as to why we're doing it at this point. So, by way of background first, as you all know, and as many others may or may not know, the Hotel Roanoke Conference Center is operated under a commission. So, there's a commission, which is really a joint operation, so it's an independent enterprise, really, but jointly operated by the Virginia Tech Foundation, as well as the city of Roanoke. There are commission members appointed to that commission, and there are actually two budgets. There's basically one budget that provides funding for the commission itself, that's pretty minimal, as that covers the staff that's assigned to it, as well as just the expense associated with the meetings themselves. Then there is the operating budget of the actual conference center itself. Similarly, there's another budget, which is not a part of this, that actually deals with the operation of the hotel, and that is handled by the foundation, as well as by the contractor that they contract with in order to manage that facility. Traditionally, that has been presented and approved by the commission, which it has indeed been in this case as well. The commission felt, I'll use Tim's comment earlier, the belts and suspenders comment, felt that in order to really make certain that we were completely aligned with the direction that is provided in the enabling legislation that approved the commission back some time ago, that it really was best if not only the commission approved the budget, but that also that budget be presented to you all, as well as to the Virginia Tech Foundation, or to Virginia Tech itself as well, for their approval. So, if you think of this, very similar to when you receive and approve the budgets for the airport, receive and approve the budgets for the resource authority, and so on, same type of thing here. This budget is coming to you, having been approved by the commission, and this is kind of the final step in that process. There any questions about any of the information? Brian Mann is here, who is the staff person for the city that actually is with the commission as well. But just wanted to provide that, because we've not done that before, so this is kind of the first year we're actually taking this step. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion by members of council? All right. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you all. All right. Now, we're on item 7A4, which is the appropriation of funds for the Evan Springs, haven't seen that name in a while, Evan Springs Master Planning Project. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk, can you read the title of the paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Economic Development Authority of the city of Roanoke and Evan Springs property owners for the Evan Springs Master Planning Project, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021, 2022 capital projects fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Ms. Cobb, could you, I mean, not this Cobb. Ms. Cowell, could you please explain?
Sure.
This to our public?
We'll be happy to do so. So, as you all know, of course, the Evan Springs area is owned by a collection of private property owners who have expressed a long-term interest in seeing development take place on that property. It is also adjacent to an established neighborhood, as well as, of course, being adjacent to 581, to the interstate in that area. The last effort that was attempted by the property owners did not progress even to planning commission hearings. It went into some of the neighborhood discussions, and ultimately, the owners opted not to proceed any further with it. To date, the area has benefited from a kind of a neighborhood plan, an area plan, that was created by the city in partnership with the neighborhood many years ago, and it gives general ideas of what should occur there, but it's short of details. The next step in that process is actually the details of what would actually go on the property to set the stage for rezoning requirements as it would move forward. In this instance, what has been proposed is that next step. So, the development of that master plan in collaboration with the neighborhood. So, the neighborhood would be a part of the development of this plan, the costs of which are being shared by three parties. One is by the city, one is the Economic Development Authority, and the other are by the property owners in that area. So, what this item does is it receives the funds, it accepts the funds, from the Economic Development Authority, as well as from the private property owners. The city will then actually issue a request for proposals for design firms that would assist in this effort, and then at that point, the process would begin, again, very similar to how we do our neighborhood plans, so it would begin with discussions with the neighborhood, some type of community meetings and other kinds of things going on. And over a period of time, hopefully, what will result from that is a consensus around what could potentially develop on the property, at which time, if that is arrived, then the rezonings would occur moving forward. So, this doesn't do anything in terms of further, it doesn't do anything in terms of immediately furthering development of the property. Nothing is changing on the uses of the property or the zoning. This merely sets the stage for that broader community conversation of what might be possible on this property.
Very good.
All right. Is your hand up?
Yeah.
Ms. Allen.
I just have one, Mr. Collins, just one point.
Sure.
Clarification. Under the considerations, the only sentence I have a question about, or if maybe you could clarify, it said the consulting services will have a considerable expense with no assurance of successful rezoning, and it's going to cost about $150, or?
Yeah, so, think of this, what this is, when we finish, is a plan.
Just, okay.
It's a plan. So, but, hopefully, by the time we get to that plan, we will have consensus around, consensus from the neighborhood, consensus from the developers, consensus from the EDA, that this is indeed something that's viable and desirable, but it still will require rezonings, which are subject to public hearings, and subject to ultimately legislative action by yourselves. So, this will result in a plan that sets the stage for the potential of those rezonings, but does not guarantee their outcome.
So, this consulting service is pretty much a mediator for the?
Yeah, I think it's a good way to describe it. I mean, they're bringing in professional design services.
Right, right.
So, they're bringing in the perspective of planners, transportation planners, landowners, economic developers, and kind of bringing that together to really, hopefully, arrive at that consensus, to mediate kind of an arrival that benefits.
Oh, okay.
Both what we're trying to accomplish as a city, what the private property owners want and need off the property, and what will benefit the adjacent property.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful. That's so primarily, I just wanted to decipher what their role is, and that makes a little bit more sense, because it didn't for me in the beginning. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Price.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Collins. Glad the mayor went ahead and asked you to explain this, because this is certainly extremely important, and so happy to see that this is including, starting off, including the property owners initially. And approximately, once we get through this first stage here, approximately, when do you think these talks would get started?
Yeah, I think it'll take us probably about 60 days, probably, to go through the RFP process and select the firm, at which time then, after that work has been, once they've been selected and the contract's been approved, then we would begin that work. So, I'd say, figure 90 days before we actually are ready to start engaging.
Gotcha.
With folks.
Okay.
Now, what people need to understand is, during that 90 days, what we're doing is we're choosing the firm that will be involved. So, there's no, there's still no, at that point, no discussions of what to use the land for, there's no discussion of land use planning or any of those. or any of those.
This is just laying out the process.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Best Pitch.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I certainly agree with Ms. Price. This is extremely important, and I think it's really important for us to emphasize that this is quite different from the rezoning application that was finally withdrawn in 2020, because that application started with a plan that was brought in. And I just want to make sure it's very clear to everybody, as of today, there is no plan. There's absolutely no plan. So it's a blank slate, it's an opportunity for homeowners and residents that live in that part of the city to be involved from square one, not to be brought in at some later point in the process to ask for their reaction, but to start with listening to them and finding out how they would like to see this property developed, and then we'll see if a plan can come forward that would ultimately, as you said, go through the planning commission and finally come to city council.
Yeah, I think that's a good way.
So I just want to make sure the community is very well aware that there is not a plan at today.
I think it's a really good way to describe it. Under our normal zoning processes, though we certainly encourage property owners to engage with the neighborhood, they're not obligated to do so. In this case, the property owners did, but they're really engaging at that point, in effect, selling a design that they've come up with to the neighborhoods. In this case, it will be jointly developing that with them. Now, no question, you know, the property owners are going to be coming in with interests that they want to make money, obviously, and there's no question that neighborhoods are coming in with interest, and they want nothing, very little to change. It's going to be trying to find that consensus between those two, what can really benefit the neighborhood and what can ultimately make money on the property. That's going to be the interest that they're trying to strive toward. But you are correct, there is, at this point, there is no plan. The purpose of this is actually to create that plan, and I say no plan, no plan beyond the existing Evan Spring kind of large-scale neighborhood plan, but no detailed master plan.
Ms. Good Point, Ms. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I would concur with a lot of that. I think one of the big questions I have, anytime there's a major, there's major land, that we talk about what the assets of that land are in terms of what is naturally there, and how to preserve and protect that, and then how it intersects with the neighbors who reside close by. And I would argue that, you know, even though they may not own that land, they are neighbors to it, and one of the things I've consistently seen through these processes is that while we say upfront, neighborhood engagement and perspective is the most important thing, it often is not honored in that way. So I think it's really critical that we make that an absolute priority in this process. I'm also concerned, and I don't know if this is accurate today, but there may be people here today who wanted to speak to this, but because our agenda doesn't really allow for people to sign up to speak for something that's not a public hearing, they might have had to have signed up for the hearing of citizens upon public matters. I guess I just wanted to ask, Mayor, if, with your permission, if there are people here today who may have anticipated wanting to address this matter, if we could invite them to speak, or find a way to engage with them in some conversation today regarding that. I don't know if anyone came here to speak specifically, or just to hear our conversation about it, so.
Yeah, at a minimum, and again, ultimately, it's up to you all, at a minimum, I think, Chris is still, yeah, Chris, you want to raise your hand? So Chris Chittam in our office is obviously the one that's actually orchestrating kind of this effort and getting everybody moving through this process, so if not speaking to you all, certainly would encourage, before anybody leaves here, to get with Chris so that you can get plugged into the information and be certain that you're aware of kind of that timeline. Again, this particular item is simply to receive the funds so that we can begin the process. There's really, at this point, nothing else that we can do, but I just raise that as an opportunity.
All right, is there anybody here that can speak to this item? Uh, can we have them, they want to come up?
Yes, council can always entertain folks to speak. There's nothing to prevent that.
All right, if you want to come up, man. Out there?
Yes, I just.
Give us your name, please.
My name's Ladonna Jordan. Good day to all the city councils. How y'all doing? I'm Tiffany Jordan's sister, and we are a part of the Evan Springs. And only thing I want to address and say, the most, because there's motions behind all this, I'm sure you understand, you know, we don't be, we don't want to be uprooted. We don't want anything that's, you know, that's a neighborhood there, you know? We are a neighborhood and a community. They've been trying to take it from us for years, and they, when we was in school, they was talking about building new neighborhoods around, like new houses, that's what the community needs. We don't need any project experience, no guinea pig experience. We are a family, we are citizens. We have invested our time, my parents are old, as you see, my dad, my mom's still working, they're trying to have a foundation. So when we do have kids, my sister and myself, we can have something too, that we can be proud of as a family house, you know? I get it that, you know, money is everything, but money is not everything to us, it really ain't. And I hope, honestly, I'm against it, my family's against it, but if, for some reason, things do come past, at least give us a fair chance to say, okay, and prepare ourselves, you know? Don't just come take, oh, you're going to get out of here. We're the big shots, no, 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 because you're going to, it's going to be a fight. It is, I mean, you know, and a lot of y'all may know me, and I'm not scared to address my voice to nothing, but I do want to come up here and just say, you know, we appreciate everything that y'all do do for the city, honestly, but as far as coming into our home and taking it from us, ripping it out, because that's basically what it is, and just throwing us some money, no, that's not going to work. And that's all I have to say, unless my dad has to say something. Thank you.
I just wonder.
Give us your name, sir.
Will Jordan. I've just wondered, five years ago, we had, y'all know, this guy came by and to give us money, fifteen hundred dollars for every six months, and then we thought the thing had failed too, which it did. Now, all of a sudden, Evan Springs pops up again. We don't need that mess over there, we don't. I mean, everybody else, when it first started, everybody just jumped up, sold their houses, yeah, oh, yeah, they're going, they're going, they're going to come out, they're going to do this, ain't do nothing, ain't do a doggone thing. Now, ain't built two owners over there, well, three owners rather, now, now, what else in the world? I mean, it don't make no kind of sense, it don't. Yeah, every time, yeah, every time you turn around, that's right, every time you turn around, it always something, Evan Spring, can you find somewhere else to go? What you want to build over there? Can anyone tell me what you want to build over there? You throwing away money? Put some new houses over there.
Fix the streets.
Yeah.
The streets are terrible.
You got, you got a whole, say, uh, up on Merrows, it's, you told that in that building, the Christopher Cream, build something there, yeah. You got, you got a whole mall up there, tie that down and build something there. Just stay off of Top Hill Drive. Yeah?
Take it, man, just sit there. You got area, that's a lot of legacy there, and people have to come back with them.
Okay, all right, okay? All right, thank you, okay. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to thank Chris Chittam for taking the time last week to speak with me with regards to this project. He gave me the time for about a, over a little over an hour to talk about the Evan Spring project, and my understanding is that it is a hundred and thirty acres off of five eighty-one, oh, in that area, and there are three property owners that they will be working with, and as I had mentioned to Chris, my concern would be that they do meet with the Farrell and Civic, uh, Fitzgerald and Civic neighborhood, as well as the Villa Heights and the Merrows Rugby, and that was mentioned also in their agreement, that they will be reaching out to those stakeholders, which is the property owners, as well as the residents and the businesses in that community and the surrounding neighborhood. But it is to create and develop and bring forward an rezoning to permit the development of those properties. But my thing is, we're starting at the beginning, and which is where now the neighbors know what we know, and I'm sure that the consultant will do that piece, reach out to those stakeholders, and do their due diligence with regards to this rezon, I mean, this development, to create the plan from the Evan Spring area plan, to come up with a development plan. Thank you.
All right, anybody else have any comment? Nope.
No, I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Best Pitch said, that there is nothing being done right now, no development whatsoever, this is just primarily to transfer the money, the funding for the consulting services that will be working with all of, all of the property owners, the, I mean, working with everyone, so nothing is going to happen until hopefully everybody has come to a consensus, just like Mr. Cowell said. I know it was said before, but I just wanted to reiterate that, so you all don't leave thinking there's something happening, because there is not. At this point, nothing.
And it'll probably, like I said, it'll probably be at least ninety days before there is any further engagement.
Before there's any engagement, and that would come from the consulting firm that we have.
Correct, or from the city, making the connections and stuff, yeah.
And if they have questions to follow with you all.
Chris will be the contact person.
All right, all right, we've got a lot of conversations going on, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
We got that, thank you, and Chris, you on standby, so we got that. All right, any other questions? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and this budget ordinance passes. All right, thank you. All right, we're now on item seven, seven, eight, ooh, seven, eight, five. Appropriation of parking fund retained earnings for capital maintenance projects in connection with the city parking garages. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the parking fund retained earnings to the preventative maintenance of Elmwood Center in the Square and Tower Garages, security and the Tower Garage Elevator Modernization Project, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021, 2022 parking fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council?
Yes, sir, I do have a little discussion, especially as it pertains to Center in the Square. Perhaps we can add a little bit more to update that, that parking, that exit, the validation machine, or a person. I know a person is not realistic, Mr. City Manager, but we just had that discussion during our break, that we, some of us are not that challenged to where we can't get out of the garage. There apparently something going on with it.
Yeah, I know they added signage, I don't know, Brian, Brian and Jamie are back there with.
I don't know, it's either that or we're quite special.
Yeah.
It was a hostage.
While they're, while they're coming over, just so everybody understands, and I know you all know this, but, you know, our parking operations are operated as an enterprise, as a business, therefore, there are no tax dollars that go to this, it's the users of the system that pay for this.
It's our dollars.
That's right, whoever's paying to park there is what's paying to operate it. These are dollars that are from those that are set aside to be able to do preventative maintenance, to keep the facilities in good shape.
And enhancements, I would think would be included in that, so.
That's right, well, and that's where the pay kiosks, for example, came from, when we actually implemented, the automatic system came from these kinds of proceeds and stuff, so.
Well, I just, I've seen so many disasters from a large event and backups, I just, I just felt like there should, that we should have some other options, and perhaps you do, I don't know.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. We have, and I talked to Councilman Cobb before the meeting, it was funny, because Mr. Best Pitch, he complimented us, and then Mr. Cobb said we have an issue, and so here we are.
And then I say it's a disaster.
And then you say it's a disaster, and we're just trying to here to get, to get money to pay for capital projects, but that's where we are, we understand that, anytime parking comes before you guys, we are prepared to answer any and all questions, and we appreciate that. But there is a thing called gateless entry, we are looking into that pretty heavily, and what that is, it gets rid of the gates to the garages. Now, it wouldn't work for every garage, but for instances on Center in the Square garage, where we have, you know, limited input, limited access and egress, so it bottlenecks there, especially on event nights, as you are all aware of. So gateless entry basically gets rid of the gates and allows the person, the parker to drive in, you pay on app on your phone, and then you just drive out. There's no stop, there's no stopping in or stopping on the way out. And so we're looking at that as a potential fix, or not a fix, but, you know, to help with that problem. The other thing we talked about is utilizing the monthly parking exit and putting in another kiosk over there, which that would be another system, so when people leave for these events, that they can have the option to go left or right. We are limited there as to what we can do, unfortunately. We needed a much bigger, in hindsight, a much larger garage to go there, with multiple ingress and egress exit, unfortunately, we don't have that, so we're trying to retrofit it in a way that makes everybody happy.
Yeah, you know, and I would just make one follow-up comment about the phone and the Apple Pay and all of that, that's really good for those of us who are that tech savvy, but, you know, I have found that most of the people who are attending the events at Center in the Square and New Mountain Theater, they're older people, and they are struggling sometimes to get in and out of that garage, so I don't know if that's the answer, but I appreciate you looking into that, but I think we've got to come up with something that's simple, that works for everybody, because these are the people, the elderly are the ones who are supporting our theaters, not the twenty-year-olds, not many of them.
Understood, understood, yeah, but we have to keep it into somewhat perspective, even if we were to staff somebody that was going to sit down there and take cash in or cash out, it's still going to slow the process down. You're still going to have to have some type of interaction where the person exiting that garage is going to have to stop. Now, when you do that on a large-scale basis, there's really no other solution. I wish I could just snap my finger and make it easier for everybody, we've really, you know, worked pretty extensively on trying to come up with solutions, and we have staffed people there. I think Jamie and I, after this, after hearing your concerns, we'll go back and look at, see if more staff will actually help the problem go any faster.
Yes, and I'm not recommending staff, just a system that's user-friendly, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Cobb.
Ms. Cobb. Thank you. I have a question, it's really not related to that. It's, it's hard to bring it up, but it's a reality. Over recent years, we, Corillian's dealt with this, and I know we've dealt with it, when we talk about suicides, that we've had some suicides take place off of some of our garages, and that's, none of us want that to happen. Corillian recently did something that I think is pretty innovative on their, on one of their garages, they may be adding it to the second, but they've added fencing on every level, all the way up, as a prevention and reduction strategy. I have no idea what that costs, it's obviously a capital project, but I'm thinking particularly of some of our garages that are pretty wide open, and I just wanted to kind of put that on the table as something for us to maybe look at, if you're not already looking at that, and I know that there were some people involved very closely with getting that done at Corillian that would be good to talk with, if that, those conversations aren't already taking place.
No, I appreciate that, and, you know, it's something that we have looked at, especially after the several high-profile incidences we had at Church Garage, and I've even been in contact with Mr. Cowell, and, you know, we've looked at pricing those options out, and, you know, the question is, what's it worth to save one life, you know? But unfortunately, as Mr. Cowell explained, you know, we are an enterprise fund, we generate our own revenues and cover our own expenses, and the cost to retrofit something like that is extremely high, but we felt the need to address that back when those, when we had those incidences, and I said, Jamie, we have to look at, see if we can do something. You know, unfortunately, we- You know, unfortunately, we lost quite a bit of revenue when it came to parking because of COVID. Uh, we lost our number one, um, parking, uh, revenue stream, um, through Anthem. You know, it was close to four hundred thousand dollars a year we lost in the revenue, just from that one parker. So, we're trying to rebound. Uh, things are bright for parking, believe it or not. Uh, we're going to have to be thinking in, in future years, where are we going to put all these parkers? Which was different than few, just a few years ago, so. It's something that we can definitely revisit, and I'll get with Mr. Cowell and, uh, Jamie, and see if, if it's a viable option, uh, moving forward.
Thank you.
Alright, any other discussions? Well, let's, Madam Clerk, go ahead and call the row.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Alright, we're now, uh, down to item seven A six. Is the execution of a mutual assistance agreement between the Roanoke Police Department and the Roanoke County Sheriff's Office. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, read the title of paragraph, please.
A resolution authorizing the city manager or his designate to enter into a letter agreement regarding mutual aid assistance between the Roanoke Police Department and the Roanoke County Sheriff's Office.
Alright, is there any discussion on this? Alright, hurry now, I'll ask Madam Clerk to call the row.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and, uh, the resolution passes. Alright, well, I'm pleased now to recognize the city manager for any comments that he may have.
Thank, thank you, Mayor and Council, just a few, few quick items. Um, as was mentioned, um, prior in the meeting, uh, just want to highlight again the upcoming youth summit. Again, that's on the twenty-fifth of this month, from ten till five or six, um, whenever we say that, five o'clock, five o'clock. And it's at Washington Park. Um, and as mentioned, you can find additional information on the, the city's website for that as well. Also remind everyone that, um, on June third, our pools opened. And of particular note, the Washington Park Pool is a part of our Star City Safe Initiative. Mondays are free admission. It's based on a first-come, first-served till we reach capacity, um, at the pool, but that's every Monday at the Washington Park Pool. Also want to draw attention to, um, as part of this year's, um, being the year of the artist, is the Art, Roanoke Arts Commission is seeking youth-created work that they will ultimately display at the Oliver Hill Justice Center. The work is actually getting created through a series of workshops, the first of which will occur on June eleventh. And there's more information for any youth interested in that at roanookarts.org. And then finally, I just want to acknowledge that today is, um, the anniversary of D-Day, um, which occurred, began on this day, and that was, of course, the Allied Invasion of Normandy, which began the liberation of France. It was at that time the largest, uh, seaborne invasion in history, and involved twenty-four thousand Allied troops, of which there were ten thousand casualties and more than four thousand four hundred, um, confirmed to have died in that, um, in that invasion, or that operation. And of course, um, what's most notable as well is that the National D-Day Memorial, of course, is just up the road in, in Bedford, and just wanted to acknowledge that today is, um, is the anniversary of that, um, of that day. Thank you, and that is, um, those are my updates.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions for Ms. Cowell? Alright, item six B, city attorney, authorit, item number one, is authorization for the city of Roanoke to participate in a firearm buyback program with the Roanoke Monthly Meeting of the Religious Society of Friends Incorporated. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance, second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city to participate in firearm buyback programs with the Roanoke Monthly Meeting of the Religious Society of Friends, Inc. And to have the police department receive and destroy such surrendered firearms in accordance with section fifteen point two dash nine one five point five of the Code of Virginia as amended.
Alright. Any discussion, my members of council? Hurrying now, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms., Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes, thank you. Uh, item number eight is reports of committees. We have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions, none. Motions and miscellaneous business, inquiries or comments by the mayor or members of city council. Uh, I'll go, you and Best pitch coming up.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I didn't know that, uh, Mr. Cowell was going to make those remarks about the anniversary of D-Day, but I, I certainly appreciate the fact that you did. And I just wanted to tie that together a little bit, uh, with not only the reason why the, uh, D-Day Memorial is just over here in Bedford, about thirty minutes away from us, but why we ha, have a sister-city relationship with Saint Lo, France. The fiftieth anniversary of D-Day, Bob Slaughter went over and came back and reminded people who might have forgotten and told a lot of other people who never knew that the, most of the, uh, soldiers from our part of the state served in the twenty-ninth infantry, uh, twenty-ninth Infantry Division, and their first objective after gaining the beach was to liberate the town of Saint Lo from the Nazis, who had been there for about four years at that point. Saint Lo is about twenty-four miles from the beach. It took them fighting across farm field after farm field in what's called the Battle of the Hedges, forty-four days to go that twenty-four miles. Every time they got, the Nazis pushed out of one hedge row and got into next field, the Nazis were waiting for them again in the hedge row at the far side of that field. So, uh, I just wanted to, again, especially recognize that and how, how lucky we are to be here today, because of the greatest generation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Best pitch.
Alright, any other comment?
I, I had a comment, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to, um, just ma, give everyone an update. We have, um, we, um, the, uh, Harrison Museum of African-American Culture, uh, working with me to, um, raise funds for, uh, a project called Hidden in Plain Sight, which would include a documentary about, uh, areas in the city that were hidden in plain sight, and to erect a statue in the, um, plaza that we just recently renamed Lax Plaza. And our goal was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And I just want to say that we are right at about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And so, we really only need about twenty-five thousand dollars. So, if everyone listening could send us a dollar, we would meet our goal and go ahead and erect that statue. We are just so very, very close.
Inches.
It inches, so very close. So, I'm just making appeal to those who wanted to give and who haven't given, if you want to. Thank you, and the money starts to flow, and the money is flowing. So, really, we are so close, and, and we would really love to go ahead and, uh, commission the artists and, uh, the sculptor, so that we can go ahead and get this started. So, that was, you know, I just had no idea we would get where we are so quickly, and then we got to a point where it's like at a standstill, but I know that we can do this, twenty-five thousand more dollars, so. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it.
Vice Mayor, that is outstanding work, and I know you've been working and calling on that.
Got two dollars just now.
Got two dollars just now. That's exceptional. And we do look forward to, uh, the statue of Henrietta Lacks becoming a reality here.
Thank you, Mayor, and that documentary, I think that people are going to be amazed at what comes out of that documentary. Thank you.
Thank you for your work and effort on that. Alright, um, just one comment. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to go down to the Iron Man, uh, contest. I had, I went down near the closing, so I wanted to recognize the, uh, some of the participants. And as I went to the podium, there were a number of people that came up and said, hey, this is a great city, we enjoy coming to this city. Some were first-time visitors, but they got word from others who have been here, and they were extremely pleased with Roanoke, uh, and they just couldn't get over the cleanliness of it. And, uh, so I just wanted to pass that on to you, that, uh, you know, as I told them when I got the mic, I said, we're a seventh-time All-American city, and looking for the eighth time, we're there. So, uh, irregardless of all the things that we may get, come at us, this city is something that you can be proud of. You've worked, you're the council, we've worked to, to get it in that way, get it in shape, and everybody here, the staff and everybody, we got something that we can be proud of. We got to keep working, it's not a finished product, but people were just overwhelmed. And some people talked about, hey, relocating down here. Uh, they want to come and live, uh, they were just impressed. And they were here for the whole weekend, just wasn't a drop-in. And, uh, so I just wanted to let everybody know that, that we're proud of our city, uh, and, uh, we want to continue to do all that we can to make it a good place to live, love, I think, Joe, I mentioned, live, love, work, and play.
Yep.
Alright, good. That's it. Uh, we're going to go now, uh, item B, we're going to talk about vacancies in a moment, so I need a certification of a closed meeting.
I move with respect to any closed meeting that just concluded that, uh, each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And, two, only such public business matters were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Alright, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Alright, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms., Ms. Price? Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, thank you. And I'm going to call on Mr. Councilman Best pitch, I think.
Yes, sir.
To talk, uh, to tell us about the appointments and reappointments. And once he shares up with us, uh, and place those names in nomination, we will go ahead and either, if you're in agreement, vote all nominees when the clerk calls the row. So, Mr. Best pitch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the City of Roanoke Pension Plan Board of Trustees, for a four-year term commencing July one, twenty-twenty-two, and all these terms commence on that date unless otherwise noted, the nominee is C. Whitney Brown, Jr. For the Court Community Corrections Program Regional Community Criminal Justice Board, three-year term, the nominee is Captain Adam Puckett. To fill the remainder of an unexpired term, which ends on March thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five, and the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, the nominee is Eric Anderson. And we waive the residency requirement for Mr. Anderson. For the Mill Mountain Advisory Board, for a three-year term, the nominee is James Davis. For the Personnel and Employment Practices Commission, the reappointment for another three-year term of Lori Baker Lloyd. For the Regional Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program Policy Board, to, uh, fill the remainder of an unexpired term, which ends on June thirty, twenty-twenty-three, the nominee is Captain Adam Puckett. For the Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, to fill an unexpired term, which ends on September thirty, twenty-twenty-two, and to a full term, starting on October one, twenty-twenty-two, the nominee is Stephen Namici. For the Roanoke Public Library Board, the nominee for a three-year term is Cindy Jones. For the Roanoke Valley Juvenile Detention Center Commission, ex-officio members, Julie Payne, for a four-year term, and waiving the residency requirement for her. And we have previously appointed Lieutenant Christopher Ramey to the Towing Advisory Board. We also need to waive the residency requirement for him. For the Virginia Western Community College Local Advisory Board, for a four-year term, the nominee is Beth Quinn. And for the Virginia's First Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, for a four-year term, the nominee is Mark Nelson, for, for reappointment. And that's all the nominations we have for today, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All of those that are in favor of those appointments, when the clerk calls, please, uh, voice your support by saying all nominees. Madam Clerk, can you please call the row?
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
All nominees.
Mr. Best pitch?
All nominees.
Mr. Cobb?
All nominees.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
All nominees.
Ms. Price?
All nominees.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
All nominees.
And Mayor Lee?
All nominees, thank you. Before we close, I go to, uh, I remember going to a revival back in the day, and, and the preacher said, "Reach in your pocket and give everything you got in your pocket, walk out on faith." Well, I got ten dollars, and I'm going to give it to, uh, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I hope to give some more, but that's what, uh, that's what I got in my pocket now.
Twelve dollars in ten minutes is not bad.
Hey, that's good, you a good family. Alright. Being, uh, no further business set forth to come before the council, the regular session of city council is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.